Good morning. It is nine o'clock. Today is Thursday, December 26, 2019. This is a regular meeting of Commissioners' Court of Grimes County, Texas. We are at the 114 West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. We're going to call this meeting to order with an invocation, followed by the pledge to the U.S. flag, followed by the pledge to the Texas flag. And we're going to ask our brother Charles Tompkins, if you would, lead us in that invocation, please, sir. Would you please stand?
Shall we pray? Father, I may thank you for this day. This is the day that we celebrate after Christmas. Father, this is the last meeting of this 2019 season. And, Father, we know you're coming into a new era. We thank you for all the things that have transpired through the 2019. And we, Father, also lift up Commissioner Walker to you. Her mother has passed, go on to glory. And we ask you a prayer upon that family and continue to be with them. Then your blessings upon this meeting and everything that will be done will be done in the pleasing of you. Bless the judge and everyone that's on this commission on the court and everyone that is here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Would you be seated, please? Mary, did we receive any sheets this morning? Okay. Next item on the agenda would be public comments. And as the rules have changed, there's a registration process. We'll now go to consensus items number three, number four, and number five. Number three is consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Five, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for November 2019 and authorize advertisement of affidavit of saying in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026. And that is page four of this agenda. I have a question for our treasurer. May I?
I might have a question.
Good. What we approve on a Commissioners' Court meeting to meeting varies fairly significantly. I mean, today's approval is 515,000, rounded to half a million. The smallest that I have seen in the first quarter of the year is 129,000. You total all of them up for the first quarter, and I know some of the 10, too, were the end of the last budget year. But we've approved or we're approving $3,888,000 in this first quarter, and that's an average of $324,000 for this first quarter. I guess my question, I have a tendency to wake up some nights, and then I don't go back to sleep, so I sit there and think, what questions could I ask in court? We do not have a cash flow problem in this county. And I understand that. But is it an issue for the treasurer's office, distribution of funds, or cutting checks and that sort of thing? Should we, I'm just asking a question because I don't want to put vendors behind, I don't want penalties, I don't want to cause anybody that we do business with an issue. But is, and because we do meet a couple of times a month, we're going to be meeting three times a month through the course of 2020. Is it advisable that we have a limit on how much we would approve for a Commissioners' Court? You know, if we paid out an average of 324,000, is there any benefit to that? Or is it...
No, because you've approved their budget, and if they turn in the invoices, we're y'all approval's getting in the game.
Right.
So I can't see where that would be a benefit.
Okay.
Unless you want to look at the budget real close in October or June.
Well, you know, with our financial obligation of the new Justice Center and things of...
Our vendors are going to get paid.
Ma'am?
Our vendors need to be paid.
No, and I get that. I just didn't know if...
And some of those vendors will include some of the work that's going to be done on the new bills.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, and we want to keep everybody happy, and we don't want a bad reputation with our vendors, but I just, because there is such a difference in how much we approve from week to week or meeting to meeting.
Now, a lot of that has to do with the departments turning in their invoices at a time of banner. Heather has a deadline, and if they don't reach that deadline, it's going to flow into the next court.
Yeah. And that could cause the next one to be higher.
Yes.
Yeah. And I know that precinct one made their automobile purchase, so that was a, you know, $30,000 bump. But, oh, just a question. I try to sleep better at night. Thank you for your answer. Any other Commissioners laying awake at night wondering or have any questions? If there are no questions, is there a motion?
Judge, I move that we approve the consensus items three, four, and five.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Items number three, number four, and number five by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Asking again, are there any further comments? In hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Madam County Clerk, would you make sure that the record shows that Commissioner Walker is absent, and we certainly know why with her mother's passing? Thank you. So that's a 4-0 vote. Agenda item number six, recognize and present Lino Gallegos with certificate of completion of master custodian program from Buckeye International Honors Program. And our maintenance engineer, Al Peeler, has, when he hired Lino, he said, I'm going to get him qualified and trained and skilled, and part of that goal has been met. And Lino has, this certificate is awarded to... Can I just use the Lino?
Yes.
Okay. Lino Gallegos Calderon. It is from CITS Verified Program in recognition of the completion of the following, Buckeye International Honors Program. And there were, there's a number of tests and things that Lino had to do to be qualified. Lino, if you don't mind coming forward, I'd like to present this to you. Mr. Peeler, you're initiated. Come on, get up here. Yeah. We'll use the wide angle.
For me? For me? Man! That's good he said that because his office was late.
So congratulations on this, and I think that's...
No, no, the other way.
Absolutely a step in the right direction. Congratulations to you. Al, thank you for making this happen.
I'll set them there. I'll turn it on. Too much Christmas.
Thanks, Al. I didn't have to photobomb that when I was in it. Go to Agenda Item number seven. Navasota Grimes County Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, John Mcnally, says, discuss and take action to renew the Grimes County Tax Abatement Guidelines and Criteria for a period of two years beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2021. It's the attachment number seven. Mr. Executive Director, it's good to have you here this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. The Tax Abatement Guidelines and Criteria is due to expire at the end of this calendar year, and I am here to request that you extend it for another two-year period. The tax abatement program, I think of it as a tool in our toolbox to help recruit businesses to locate here and to expand here, helps us to bring businesses out, create jobs, and make an investment in our community. Y'all created this at some point, and it has specific guidelines that a company would have to meet to take advantage of this with regards to their investment and with regards to job creation. And so what this is doing is just extending the period by two more years. And I would encourage Commissioners' Court, if you've had a chance to review it, to go ahead and extend it for another two-year period.
This, I'll just make a comment. I didn't lay away thinking about this one. But I am not in favor of tax abatements, okay? I do understand their validity and attracting businesses in. I do have a concern when businesses come in, how viable they might be, so that by the time the abatement is over, we start seeing the financial benefit of having them in our county. So, I mean, initially, I'm not for them, but I understand the value that they bring. This one is a five-year abatement, correct?
It could, this...
And can be modified?
Yeah.
Can be modified, sure.
Okay.
This is, these are just guidelines, and there's flexibility, and it's not an obligation on this court's part in any way to extend a tax abatement. It is just if you were going to, this is the criteria that you're starting off following. So not obligating you to do anything with any kind of...
This was put together before I showed up. You fellows, have any, Commissioners, have any comments on it?
Yeah, I worked on one that we put together, I guess shortly after I came into office. And we had a 10-year deal on it that we put together. It didn't come to fruition, but, and I kind of agree with what the judge said on these. I think five years is long enough if it's applicable, but we have to look very closely whether or not they're going to have the employees, department employees, and the benefits to the county for it.
You know, currently, you have two that are due to expire, two tax abatement plans that are due to expire at the end of this year. And then you have one more that extends, I believe, into 2022. So that's what we have outstanding right now in tax abatement.
Who do we hold responsible for auditing to make sure that the number of employees they have employed meets what the initial contractor agreement requires? Because they have to have, according to the agreement, they have to hire so many employees, and so many of them, I believe, have to be within the county and things of that sort, so that we get that initial impact and benefit from those wage earners. But Jesse Deweet, does the Auditor's Department assist in auditing that, or is that something that's on my desk, or Commissioner Dobianski's, or Commissioner Cox, or the, you know, Commissioner Mallett?
If I could respond...
You may. Your desk.
Tell me, yeah, tell me to shut up when you've heard enough. This policy was developed primarily with the assistance of Bill Sullivan over years and years. And so the new chief appraiser essentially said, this was never our responsibility to continue to help you revise and refine your tax abatement policy.
That's what Bill said.
No, that's what the chief appraiser today has said.
Oh, 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 okay.
And Bill had done it as a courtesy.
Yes.
And it was always the understanding of the court that Bill was the guy that was overseeing the requirements. Whether that actually took place, I do not know. We have had a conversation in the past that Barbara sent a letter to the last folks that got the abatement to ask them to provide on a yearly basis proof...
Barbara, Commissioner Walker?
Correct.
Okay.
That they were abiding by the requirements. That's essentially all that needs to happen, is somebody needs to ask them to provide the proof of how many employees, how much is the investment, what has been done, and what has not been done. But it is your policy, so there's nobody, you've now given Johnny this task, and he's refined this a little more. And I want to say, almost every two years, Mr. Sullivan would come in with some small change. And so now Johnny's picking up that mantle, and he's now tasked with that. It's up to you. I do not know that it was included in the agreement that we struck for economic development with the chamber, such that the chamber would oversee this. And so maybe that's something you want to tinker with, change that agreement, make that a requirement of the director over there. And of course, they may want additional compensation for that. But as of right now, this is your policy. It's up to you to decide, either you as a court are going to do it, you're going to sign a committee to do it, you're going to sign one person to do it, or potentially, you're going to delegate it to somebody that's subordinate to the court.
Thank you. My understanding also is that Barbara Walker's been receiving reports on an annual basis from the companies that are taking advantage of this abatement program. And as I said, there are only two companies, and they're both, I think, within her area.
I would think it would be the Commissioners' responsibility for it in whatever precinct it would be in.
And in this case, it's Barbara Walker's.
Yeah. Okay, and to your knowledge, Commissioner Walker's the only one that has tax abatements working?
Yes.
And that number is three?
Three, but two are due to expire at the end of 2019.
Okay, so they're just about over.
Just about over. And then the other one expires 2022.
Okay. And do you happen, off the top of your head, are they five-year or 10-year?
They were both 10-year. Of all three.
The two retiring are 10-year, and the one in action is a 10-year? Okay.
And I think that's what we were operating on.
But, you know, these can be whatever term you, if you wanted to be five-year or seven-year or whatever term fits with the situation. It can be different for every situation. You don't have to grant a tax abatement, even though you've done one for this company, you don't have to do it for any other company.
And not all companies even request or even ask about tax abatements on the coming in.
That's true. And a tax abatement won't necessarily be the driving force to get a company here. It's just a tool that you may be able to offer if there's someone who's trying to decide between you and another community. It's just something you may be able to use. And other communities certainly would use this kind of a thing. I've heard of other communities offering up free land to companies to come and locate there, that kind of thing. So, but even that is not a sure thing. Even if you offer free land, it may not be the best opportunity for that company.
Judge, could I make one other comment?
Sure, ma'am.
And I'm glad that Johnny said that. Understand that you're in competition with other counties, and to some degree, to stand out, these things, some businesses look for these things. This court also developed a 381 grant program, which is for three years potentially, and the way that the court orchestrated it is, it's to be a reimbursement of ad valorem taxes that are paid. So you have those primary tools as far as the taxes, tax obligations concerned. You can tinker with either one of them, you can operate them in conjunction with one another. The 381 was intended to be if the investment was less than, you know, the significant step of an abatement. Essentially, that's why it was to be a three-year. That, though, is just, it's effectively a grant is what it amounts to, and it's permissible. There was some question as to whether it was or not. In fact, the legislature changed the law to make it permissible. But you have these two things, and you certainly can at any point tinker with either one or both of them. What has happened, as of the last one or two applications that I know of, there's a committee that sits down that reviews this and then makes a recommendation to the court as to whether that committee believes that it's appropriate or not.
Do you recall what the makeup of that committee was?
Were you on that committee, Johnny?
It's been a while.
Yeah. I do not recall it. It involved, I thought it involved members from the chamber, but I could be mistaken. It may, I don't remember who appointed or decided was going to be on that committee. Let me see if I can find that. Talk among yourselves, now.
Well, and we have in here designated a minimum investment, you know, what's $5 million?
Yes.
Although that sounds like a whole lot of money in today's business world, that can be chewed up pretty quickly. And, well...
The committee that I was on when we put together that abatement was Bill Miller, one of the bank presidents from First National Bank, and the judge, Bill Lamont, myself, because that was in my precinct that we were looking at putting that business. And I don't recall who else was on it, but I know Bill Miller was on there.
There's mention of advisory committee, but it doesn't say who the members are to meet. Okay, thank you, sir. All right. I've kind of aired my comments, Commissioners. Y'all have any other thoughts or concerns?
I fully understand what you're saying, Judge, and I do appreciate that. I also understand that we do live in a pretty competitive business environment nowadays, and while this is not a mandatory thing for all businesses, most of them, you know, a lot of them may not even be eligible for it.
Right.
But I think it's something that we probably should keep in the toolbox and use as, you know, if, under the right circumstances, that it could benefit the county.
And I agree with that thought process, you know, because I don't want to make us non-competitive with other counties that are around us. Is there a motion to renew?
I move that we renew the Grimes County Tax Abatement Guidelines and Criteria for the period of two years beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2021.
Same.
Could I ask, is that on a condition with the changes that have been made by Mr. Mcnally? Most of it is in the form, not substantive.
Yes.
I heard you say yes, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, okay, so there's a motion before the court on Agenda Item number seven by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number eight, Commissioner Precinct Two, Commissioner David Dobianski, consider and take action to vacate in favor of or sell to and abutting owner thereof a .283 acre portion of right-of-way conveyed to Grimes County by deed in volume 112, page 32, of the real property records of Grimes County, set acreage being out of the Darius Gregg Survey Abstract Number 21, to abutting owners thereof, see attachment eight. Would anybody allow me to reread that for clarity?
I won't tell you who wrote that.
Sorry?
Sir, I won't tell you who wrote that.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, we've been working on this slice of property for a while, trying to figure out who owned it. We thought TexDOT owned it, and then they said the county owned it. I think, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, I think at one time it was probably an extension of Main Street coming into Highway 90 out there, the way it crosses the road over there. And...
I'm too young to remember that, Commissioner.
Anyway, it's about a quarter of an acre, I guess, of Ms. Freeman's yard that she's been upkeeping and for years.
Fifty years.
And she wants to get it settled, who it belongs to. TexDOT has released their authority on it. Are we, John, are we selling it, or are we?
Well, I know Ms. Freeman is here, and just for transparency, she was my teacher in... Let's call it college. We'll just call it college. In Navasota. Anyway, so I've known Ms. Freeman for a long time, and this request is very consistent with things that you all have seen, to vacate an easement. She's here, I think, with counsel today, and he and I have had a conversation via email about whether or not this should be a sale or should be a vacation. There is an AG opinion, it's now, it's fairly old, I guess it's 10 or 15 years old, talks about whether or not there's a conflict between the county selling off a county asset and the county vacating a public road. You can imagine, you may get questions about, why are you giving this up without compensation? Well, you know that to this point, you have done several vacations, each one of you. And that AG opinion effectively says, that's the statute that controls when you're dealing with a right-of-way. And so if it's an easement, I guess I should say that, if it's an easement, effectively the AG has said to all of us, it's just the AG's opinions, not said in stone, but that the proper procedure should be a vacation. And there are three different terms. We talk about abandonment, discontinuance, and vacation. I will usually use the word vacation because it means strip the public nature of it. And from my perspective, the deed that granted the county anything in this .283 acre tract granted an easement only. And if that's the case, in my opinion, a vacation is what's appropriate. Originally, though, when the question came up as to whether this came from the state, or whether the state of Texas owned this or not, I think the deed to TexDOT that was in proximity to this location may have granted the fee. And so early on, I think Ms. Freeman and her counsel were seeing this as procedure where the county would be buying, or would be, I'm sorry, selling the .283 acre tract. In that regard, they obtained an appraisal. The appraisal indicates that the value of the piece to be sold is $1,700. But again, from my perspective, I think this is a vacation. It doesn't matter to me. Certainly, it would be easier to justify to your constituents that you obtained compensation on this. The determination of what interest, and if it were fee, that may be the way to go, is that you're selling it because you own the minerals, you own the surface, you own, you know, the sky, you own the fee. But in my reading, it is only an easement. Now, I will tell you, that's subject to determination by court. Well, nobody's going to go out and ask for that today. I mean, it's, be senseless, a bunch of waste of time and money. But usually, the cases, and I haven't reviewed them in some time, but the last time I reviewed the cases on that particular issue, the courts were primarily focusing on what's called the granting clause, grant, sell, and convey. I hereby, we hereby, grant, sell, and convey. And then in that phrase, you see whether or not they say right-of-way, whether they say for public road purposes, et cetera. And that's essentially what I think what we're talking about here. And that's, in my opinion, why I think we're talking about an easement. Now, if we're talking, they have done everything that's necessary for a sale. But if we're talking about a vacation, I don't know that the notice has been posted at the courthouse in the vicinity of the property to be vacated, or the right-of-way to be vacated. You have the ability, dare I say this, you have the authority to vacate the public nature of any county road without requiring someone to file a petition and request it. Okay? You have the ability to do that on your own volition. The one time that I recall it ever happened, it was done in Roans Prairie, and it turns out that it was a bad idea because there was someone who wanted to continue to use the public road for access to their property. No one investigated, spoke up at the time. Everybody believed that there was no issue with the vacation applied to Valero Station in Roans Prairie. But after that was done, it turned out there was somebody that was offended or felt aggrieved by it. Now, truth of the matter is, this is way too much, but you, if you were to vacate the public nature of a road, but someone had purchased or acquired property that was abutting that road and needed access, you couldn't strip their private easement right. And that's essentially what happened over there. So there was some salvation, there was a saving grace of that circumstance, so not a problem. But you today could grant this vacation regardless of whether there's been the 20-day notice prior to the application. If you do that, though, and I heard Johnny say that earlier about, you know, you could treat folks differently, I'm always fearful of a claim of violation of the Equal Protection Clause. You got to treat, as a government, you're obligated to treat folks situated same position similarly. So if you started granting things without requiring the application being posted in the notice and at the courthouse, then the next guy or girl is going to say to you, hey, why do I have to do this application? So from my perspective, that's why I put it on the agenda both ways. You certainly could move forward with a sale because this is an adjoining landowner, and you could say, we're going to sell what we have, whatever that interest may be, for $1,700. I suspect that, maybe I'm wrong, I suspect that Ms. Freeman would rather not pay for it and would probably prefer a vacation. In my reading, that's appropriate, but it requires the notice, and I don't know that the notice has been done. I'm not saying it hadn't, I just don't know.
And, good morning.
Good morning. Could you come to the podium, please, sir, and identify yourself?
Sure. My name is Payton Holt.
The podium?
Oh, sorry. My name is Payton Holt. I'm counsel for Ms. Freeman. I've been working on this matter for about two and a half years now. And what Mr. Holt's recitation is correct, it has been a moving target, so to speak, from our end. And in regards to why we proceeded with a sale of land, and the first part is true in that we, first step we took was we went and got a title report, and we said, who owns this particular tract of property? And the title report kind of looked at the deeds and said, well, it looks like the TexDOT owns it. So we went down that route. And when we got the survey, the survey, the preamble on the survey said that Grimes County owned it. We initially thought that that was just an error, and we asked Mr. Waznawski to fix that, and he said, no, you know, really, Grimes County owns that because he, you know, surveyed it out and needs some bounds. So then we moved forward this way. But before, before we went forward with moving and posting a notice in the Navasota Examiner to purchase a piece of property pursuant to Texas Local Government's Code, to buy a piece of property from a county entity, we kind of made sure that we got the blessing. I emailed Mr. Dobianski about, hey, this is kind of what we're looking at. Will you accept, you know, the... Will you accept, you know, the local government code requires an appraisal. We got one recently for Text Dot. We all accept that, and so we don't have to go spend another, I think it was $1,500 to get a $1,700 appraisal. So it was, so we kind of wanted to avoid that, especially given that we're only dealing with a, you know, a quarter acre tract.
Right.
And so moving forward, that's, you know, coming down to is a notice given to vacate an easement, you know, I would fall at the mercy of this court and say, can we avoid that another three weeks? It seems unnecessary, given that we've already posted from a sale perspective, kind of upon the blessing of this court. And then on top of that, in regards to, will any other circumstances come down the line? If we move forward without having to post something on a piece of property, are there any, you know, negative side effects that could potentially come down? Are there any other abutting landowners that would be affected by this vacation? And the answer to that is quite simply no. There's a state highway on one side, there's a county road on the other side, and Ms. Freeman's tract is right there at the corner. And back to the point earlier of, we're not really vacating a road at any, no roads will be affected at all. There's simply a quarter acre tract that has been unused for the last 50 years, and Ms. Freeman's been keeping track of it. Yeah. So that's what, the primary purpose of this is to get that piece of property that her family has treated as family land, from a title perspective, into the fold so that she can move forward in, you know, giving that land to her family when she moves forward, or if she sells the land, she has a warrantable title in that regard. So if that helps explain anything from our end.
Thank you. Commissioner Dobianski, I'm going to put the burden on you at this point. It's in your precinct. You've been dealing with this. Do you have a recommendation?
I recommend that we vacate the property rather than sell it. Because I, again, I've talked to Text Dot numerous times about it, and Chad Boni sent us a release on it. We thought it belonged to them. He said, usually, that land does go back to the landowner if it's in the deed, but we've never found a deed that stated that it was, it was needed to Text Dot or the county or, it is needed to the county, I think, but, you know, I don't know if there's a revocation clause in that or not. So...
Well, I'll read it to you if you want. It is the county, and it says, "We, the undersigned citizens and property owners of Grimes County, Texas, forwarding consideration of sum of $1 to us, and each of us paid, the receipt of which is hereby acknowledged in further consideration of laying out and establishing an improvement of the Navisota Anderson Roans Prairie Public Road, said road being also known as State Highway 90, situated in Grimes County, Texas, along which our property lies, have this day bargained, sold, granted, and conveyed, and due by these presents, bargained, sell, grant, and convey for public road purposes to Grimes County." And so that's where, from my perspective, only an easement was obtained because it was granted for public road purposes, not a conveyance of the fee. And it seems to me that's consistent with what I understand the case has turned on. Well, let me, I'm going to read this other provision to you, and maybe we can figure out a different way to get this done. Maybe you could approve it conditionally today upon notice being posted at the courthouse in two places in the vicinity such that they don't have to come back to court. So I'm going to read the statute as far as the application is concerned. Commissioners' court may not grant an order on an application made under this section unless the applicants give notice of their intent to apply by posting at the courthouse door and two other places in the vicinity of the affected route a written notice of their intent for at least 20 days before the date the application is made. So effectively, you could say application is being made, or they're going to do the notice after today, and application is going to be made, and absent some objection being filed by some folks, you could say, today you're conditionally approving that application. Again, the concern here, it's not about really the neighbors, the concern here is that you start a precedent of the next person who says, you've seen two developers or two folks coming in here to say, we want to make this road go away so that now we can own all of this property minus all of these roads. For instance, the entire southwest side of Roans Prairie. I mean, that's what they came in with not too long ago. And if you grant these without an application being made and posting of the notice, now to be honest with you, you put it at the courthouse in the vicinity, are people going to see it? You don't know that. But that's the obligation of the statute.
That's the obligation.
Yeah, that's the obligation of the statute. Again, having seen this work out in a way that folks felt aggrieved, I don't want to go too far, but Valero wanted to expand their site. There was, happened to be Napoleon Avenue that ran right through their property. Napoleon Avenue was never improved, so it was a piece of dirt. And essentially, Valero wanted to make that go away. Well, lo and behold, there's a one acre tract that sits behind the Valero that would have used Napoleon Avenue to get to their property. The vacation done by the Commissioners' Court could not strip the private easement right that the one acre owner had, so they still had a right. Well, if you drive by there now, you see there's a driveway, all concrete, between big truck pumps and between the rest of the store, and it's to get access to that one acre tract because those folks are sitting in the catbird seat. And that's what I kept telling them. They were frustrated with what the court had done. I said, look, you're in a perfect position. You still have a private easement right. You can tell Valero how this thing's going to look, and if Valero obstructs your easement, guess who's going to pay? Valero. So all to say, I would rather us not fall into a situation where folks feel aggrieved, and I would not, I would like to see us avoid a situation where we start a precedent where people are, where we're not doing the application. And if in this case you believe the application is appropriate, I don't want to belabor it anymore. I know Ms. Freeman has been, and her counsel has been working on this for a long time. I would certainly like, if the court's inclined to grant the vacation, I'd certainly like to see the court facilitate that, but at the same time, I don't want you guys to fall down a slippery slope. One last thing, I have talked to Mr. Walker about this, and he doesn't have any objections to it.
Well, the plot that I'm looking at, there's no other landowners that would be considered. It's all Text Dot on both sides and Ms. Freeman on the east side, so...
I move that we move forward with the vacate, with the recommendation that you, I mean, with the fact that you all will go ahead and post those, and when the postings are finished, that the vacate will take effect.
Right. If, my request would be that they post the notice and then send some document to me to say, this is our application, and then I'll effectively receive it on behalf of the court. And if there are no objections filed at that point, I'm hearing you say you're conditionally approving it.
Yes. And as they, Ms. Freeman's counsel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you in agreement to do that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eight by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Agenda Item Number Nine, County Attorney John C. Foltz. Consider and take action to approve agreement between Grimes County, Texas and the GO Texan Committee regarding the purchase of two electronic display boards for Grimes County Fairgrounds, attachment number nine.
All right, Jesse's told me to shut up, so I'll try my best. Court has already approved essentially this same agreement. You'll recall that the two display boards on either side of the marquee sign for the fairgrounds that happens to be on the Navisota Livestock property, so we have a lease with Navisota Livestock for that sign. The GO Texan Committee agreed to pay for those, and I drafted the agreement after the signs were already purchased. My understanding of the agreement was that it was to be three years that the GO Texan Committee was going to get the use of the fairground facility for a week in, as in exchange for having purchased these signs. I learned from Mr. Krieger here the last week or so that his agreement was for five years, not three years. So I'm asking the court to consider this agreement, one that I have revised, has for a five-year period instead of for a three-year period. That's the change. And Mr. Krieger's not here. If you have any questions beyond that, that's all I know.
I'm going to ask Commissioner Cox if you had any kind of conversation or input on this or thoughts or comments.
Early on, yes, and it's the same conversation that we've had before. If you recall, the cost of the actual signs and Commissioner Dobianski's actually on the GO Texan Committee is around $17,000.
Close to $18,000, I think. About $18,000.
And the sign is, you know, something that I believe the court has desired for a while to get out there. So my recommendation would be to approve this agreement.
With County Judge's signatory?
With, yes, I'll make the motion, Judge. I move that we approve the agreement between Grimes County, Texas and the GO Texan Committee regarding the purchase of two electronic display boards for the Grimes County Fairgrounds.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Nine, first by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Ten, consider and take action to vote on individuals nominated by the President of the Texas Association of Counties TAC with the concurrence of the TAC Board to serve as directors for the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Pool for a term of year shown, beginning January 1, 2020. There are five positions and one nominee for each position, and TAC would like us to vote on all positions. So I'm going to take these one at a time because I have an official ballot. And I guess that would be the appropriate thing to Mr. Foltz.
Sure. However you want to do it, Dave.
Okay. So the term of three years, Jay Madden, Childress County Judge. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? That's a four-o vote. The second nominee is a three-year term. That's Marjorie Gonzalez, out of Jim Wells County Commissioner. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. I didn't ask on the first two, was there a write-in on either one of those? Was not. Position number, or the number three, a term of three years, Benny Wilson, Hansford County Judge. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Any write-ins? Position number four, term of three years, Matthew Weingart, Valverde County Auditor. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? None. No write-ins. Do we need an official motion to present these votes, or...
However you want to do it. It's your court, it's your motion, however you want to do it.
I would ask that you do that, if you would. I move to record these votes for the listed nominees. Thank you. Is there a second? Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Ten, on the basis of the four incumbents being voted in by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries, and I'll get this sent off. Agenda Item Number Eleven, consider and take action regarding burn ban and authorize County Judge's signatory. Mr. Lilly, you're here. I'm going to say that the county is pretty dead gum dry. We are forecast up to 60% on Friday, 80% on Saturday, but Mother Nature's kind of cheated us on the last couple of fronts, so...
Yeah, we are borderline drought right now, so I'm not sure what things like the Duke Point County is or anything like that at this time. I know we...
It was 100% this morning.
Yeah, I know, it's a bit, depending on the foggy mornings, but that's not enough to really change the, it burns off pretty quickly by mid-afternoon.
No pun intended.
Right. Yeah, I don't mean to use that word. But we are getting some moderate rain off and on every week, so I think it's safe to say for now that we're okay. Again, I also look at the number of calls that I'm monitoring for fire departments responding to grass fires, and that's been relatively low the last month or so.
Well, we are not meeting until, I think, January 8th of next year, so...
If anything changes, Judge, between now and the 8th, that I feel merits maybe an emergency meeting.
All right.
Yeah, I ask that you do that because there are fireworks being sold, so...
Right.
So we'll take no action?
Court.
Agenda Item Number Twelve, receive any updates on strategic plan. We have a workshop established for that, but prior to that, are there any updates? Hearing none. Go to Agenda Item Number...
I have a question on the strategic plan.
Yes, sir.
Have we set a date for the groundbreaking for the new building?
Yes, sir. There's an agenda out, and it is for 12:31 at 10:30 on location. You didn't get that in your email?
I may have.
Okay. If you got a laptop, let me know. On Agenda Item Number Thirteen, is there a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Thirteen by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? And hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We are adjourned. It is 10:45.